I'd like to call this study session a Lakewood City Council to order for Monday, August 26. First item for discussion is a review of a resolution of an intent to adopt legislation to authorize a sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with Substitute House Bill 1406. For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Do you happen to have access to your last meeting's?
Yeah, yeah, should. So, what are you looking for, Tiffany?
Yeah, this is actually from two weeks ago, excuse me, from August 12th. And in just a second, I'll give you a page number.
I don't know if we, that comes up that easily. I just have two of them on.
Page eighty-two of your August 12th packet, in addition to what's provided for you this evening, starting on page three. All right. So, if you recall from two weeks ago, as part of the economic development update, there was discussion about certain strategic actions that the council could consider taking regarding housing. And one of those was to take advantage of the new legislation Housing Bill 1406, which was titled Affordable and Supportive Housing Local Sales and Use Tax. And the reason I'm pointing you back to the last study session's materials is there's an explanation of what criteria action at the local level would need to satisfy in order to access either a total of 1.74 million or 3.49 million over a twenty-year period in the city of Lakewood. And on page eighty-three of that packet, on the twelfth, you'll see that there is a couple of things going on here. It's whether or not Lakewood takes certain actions, and it's also whether or not the county takes certain actions as well. So, first and foremost, what is this? This is a state, how to explain it? The state is allowing cities and local governments to take advantage of some portion of sales tax without any additional sales tax being charged to residents or payers. So, it's no change to the citizens, but it is an allocation change for some percentage of sales and use taxes that are collected by the state. If the city were to take action, as listed on page eighty-three of August 12th packet, to adopt a qualifying local tax by next July, there would be the opportunity to access up to roughly 174,000 a year, or 3.49 million. The qualifying local taxes could be any of those four bullet points listed: an affordable housing levy, a sales and use tax for housing and related services, a sales tax for chemical dependency and mental health, or a levy authorized under state statute if solely used for affordable housing. If the city does not do any one of those four things, they are, the city is still eligible to receive up to the 1.74-plus million over a twenty-year period, or 0.073 percent annually. That translates since to roughly 87,000 a year. The criteria to use the tax credit regardless of the amount that the city would collect would be using it on projects that serve persons whose income is at or below 60 percent of the area median income. And it can be in place for up to twenty years. It can be used for acquiring, rehabilitating, or constructing affordable housing, operations and maintenance of new affordable or supportive housing facilities, and for cities under 100,000 in population, so including Lakewood, rental assistance. If the city were to collect these dollars and want to do so, it could enter into an interlocal agreement with counties, cities, or public housing authorities to use these dollars if Lakewood didn't want to expend it themselves, or itself. If you jump now to page eighty-four of that last session's packet, or on to the, this week's packet at pages three and et cetera, you'll see the draft resolution of intent that needs to be adopted by January 31st of 2020. And then once more, if the city were wanting to do any of those qualifying local taxes and/or wanted to actually take advantage of this 1406 money, you would need to take action by July 27th of 2020 of a substantive ordinance. So, there's a few months to go on the resolution of intent, although you're certainly willing and able to do it earlier than that, I think. And then the ordinance, there's some time to put that together, should the council wish to do that. So, in this week's packet, and I apologize for the confusion back and forth, but starting on page four, you'll see the draft resolution itself. And it's listed as Attachment A, and then there's just some boilerplate language regarding 1406 itself. There's come, discussion on page four, on the fifth whereas clause that talks about Lakewood's 2017 median income, median non-family income, and median household income. And that's kind of to use in reference to that 60 percent of area median income criteria within the 1406 list. I think that's all that needs to be said about the resolution itself. The handout that I provided you in hard copy is from the Association of Washington Cities, and this is kind of an if-then flow chart for you, should you wish to step through it. But it's basically yes, no, yes, no, to get to the answer of what action the city might need to take, and how many dollars it could qualify for under 1406. So, unless there's any other questions.
So, on the, on the levy, is there a, a dollar amount, or a percent, a mil rate, or any qualification on levy?
The one that's under 84.52?
Yes.
I am not sure, but I can get that answer for you.
If, well, there are a variety of taxes. They're basically sales taxes, for the most part, but there is a, an affordable housing levy that's a qualifying tax that allows you then to get the, double the money you get from the state. But the question would be, is there a threshold as to the amount collected, or the mil rate necessary to qualify for that? The question I had is that if you do that, are you able to impose highly restrictive criteria? For example, if we wanted to say, okay, our program locally is going to be for people who meet that incrimination criteria and are owner occupants of houses for rehabilitation, so that our goal would be to target people, for example, that can't afford anymore to pay their property taxes because of their fixed income, but need a roof repair, neither do it through a grant or loan program, or no interest loan program, so that we can keep the housing stock in better condition and keep people in their homes. So, just using that as an example, maybe we want to come up with something that's more targeted. Can we do that? Because I think, just, my personal impression would be, just, a general, hey, we want to collect more tax to help low-income housing, isn't necessarily politically desirable. But if we're helping seniors stay in their home and maintain its value, that's a whole different question, so.
Yeah, I can certainly provide that information to you as a follow-up tomorrow.
Mr. Branshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if I understand your comments, you're interested in exploring adopting one of the qualifying taxes, which if we had one of those taxes, we would then be able to, in addition, get a larger sales tax rebate essentially, to use for the same purposes.
I'd like to see what the numbers are.
Yeah, I, I guess, and again, I guess I'd also like to know exactly what the mechanics of imposing any one of those are. You know, did they, do they need a vote? Are they councilmanic? Is there some piece to do that? Because I don't believe the county has adopted any of those specific qualifying taxes either. They haven't done the mental health drug dependency one, and I don't think that they've done the affordable housing levy. And I guess I, if the analysis could include, what happens if the county adopts one of those? Does that provide some eligibility to us because our citizens are contributing to such a tax because it's being used countywide, that we could then increase our sales tax piece? If we could look at that.
And just a brief answer right now, there is information that's already been provided by AWC that says that all four of those qualifying taxes would require voter approval. So, I can certainly provide more information, but that I can get, tell you right now.
All four require voter approval?
All four of those.
Yeah, okay.
So, if we don't want to impact the citizens with another vote for a tax increase, and instead we simply want to avail ourselves of this credit, which is at 0.0073 percent, right? So, that doesn't, it doesn't add any additional burden to the residents.
Correct.
And it doesn't necessarily impact, as I understand you, the general fund by decreasing the general fund from the state share of sales tax we receive, right?
Correct.
It's actually, I don't want to call it bonus money, but it's a credit that comes back to the city.
Yes.
And that is roughly, what, seventy-three to, I think you've got eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, is that right?
Yeah, it'll change each year. It'll, it'll just depend on the total amount that's collected by the state. Yeah.
So, but effectively, over twenty years, we could bond a project that had debt service of eighty-five, eighty-seven thousand for a total project of 1.7 potentially, right? Correct me. Okay, within, for instance. Got it. So, my thought on that would be, you know, I'm not in favor of adding another qualifying local tax to the current rate that citizens pay here. I would be in favor of taking the lesser percent that the state is allowing for housing, but I think we've got to be smart about it. And it seems to me, if we can do something regionally, and use these funds to bond a facility, and I think, and I hear what your, your comments are, it's probably the lesser of evils, in a sense, because you can put the money to use immediately with senior housing. But it seems to me that the political will out there is to figure out a way for us to expand some sort of transitional housing supply. And I don't know if we can do that regionally with the county, or with Silicon, or some of the other places, and, you know, it would take some machinations to figure out how to do it. But if you could work through an existing nonprofit like Lhasa, and say, we can help create ten more units of transitional housing, really transitional housing, and not the housing where people kind of come and stay for eighteen months to five years, but true transitional housing, and you get people on their feet, provided they have, you know, the inclination to get services if services are provided and needed, that kind of thing. I'd be in favor of figuring out a way to expand that kind of housing in the city of Lakewood.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this discussion. This is a, in a sense, a credit, or as Mr. Branshaw said, a rebate. And I agree with what Mayor Anderson has said. But I want to be sure I understand this. If this is a rebate, that means the rebate can go away. That would seem to me to argue that whatever money or monies we receive, we want to have total control of where those monies are spent, and we don't want to get out ahead of ourselves. Because someday, the state may say, I'm sorry, we don't have your rebate this year, and that will leave the city, and it's a twenty-year period. I don't know what the economy's going to look like in twenty years. I would like to see where we have, or whatever city council is dealing with this, we control that money. Because I don't want to see the city say, oh, well, we've got money for twenty years, and we find out that we only have it for eight, and we've overextended ourselves. Thank you.
Would you be inclined, John, to not increase it with a qualifying tax and just keep it the lesser?
I think we keep, I think you put your finger on it, Jason, when you said, keep it the lesser amount. Because I think if there is a downturn in the economy, that minimizes the damage, economic damage to citizens, you know, who don't have to pull back out and say, we'd like to vote on it, or something like that.
Yeah, my, just to qualify my prior comments, the reason I won't ask about a threshold is that this, this legislation was very clumsily drafted. There's much confusion as to the sequencing and, and the like. And if they're technically incompetent, and all you have to have is a very minimal levy lead lift for a lot, much larger match, so to speak, it might be worth considering. But if it's the other way around, maybe not, you know, so.
So, a couple of items. First, on the qualifying tax, right now, there are only Bellingham, Ellensburg, Olympia, Seattle, Tacoma, and Vancouver actually have the qualifying tax. So, very few entities have the, have the, only six cities have the qualifying tax. It doesn't matter if the counties do, because they are eligible for the 0.0143 automatically, or 0.0146. So, very few entities actually have, and it's my understanding Port Angeles is putting something on the ballot in November. It is twenty years, because that's why the state's allowing it to be bonded, and they, they put inside the legislation that you can bond it, because they do it, they do a date certain out there. Because if they didn't have a date certain, then nobody would be able to sell any bonds. If we wanted a regional approach, we could just stay in with the county. We don't have to go on our own, because they'll get our portion.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. If, 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 if we just want to do regional and make sure, and, and when this thing was first coming out, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking. I was like, well, we could do regional and just leave it in with the county, and they'll build some units somewhere. Because ours really, well, it sounds like a lot of, over twenty years isn't going to really produce much in the way of units. When Lhasa built those things, they were $400,000 a unit. As soon as there's public money in there, they have to build them on prevailing wage. So, you know, my, my thought process is, we either stay in, inside the county, or we take our nine, which I believe is ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two thousand bucks a year. And like I talked about before, we could plug it into some programs that we already currently have, if the law allows. And I think there's another section that says something about rehabilitation of housing and that kind of thing. So, we could explore that, if we, if we wanted to do it. If we wanted to build things, then we should probably just stay in with the county. That's, so I'd leave it up to the rest of you guys. I, I tend to think that we need rehabilitation. In Lakewood, it's, it's a matter of, we have a lot of housing that needs rehabilitation. And if we, if we plugged it into programs that we are, some of whom we're already giving money to, it might actually be more effective than, than putting it in with the whole, but.
And then there's a tweener we can pass this, I guess, as indirectly suggested, carving out our amount. We can always give it to the county or another cooperative program, if we see that as a viable option down the road. In the meantime, we maintain the option of spending it on our own program.
Mr. Weyland? I'm going to add one more thought to that. I, I think we should pass the ordinance to get our half of the full share, so we have the flexibility. I, I would encourage us to not make any decisions on how to spend it until we really get, dig into the weeds a little bit more on this, but at least reserve the right to do it without the extra tax increase. I wouldn't support the tax increase. We get the tax credit, I'm all for it. What I think we should think about doing down the road in another study session is looking at the opportunity for housing rehabilitation vis a vis the other option with creating additional units. I don't hear politically people saying, geez, if we just had fifty grand for senior housing rehab, we'd be hunky-dory. I do hear people saying, why don't we have facilities for transitional housing for homelessness in Lakewood? But again, this is a conversation for another day. But what I would plant, in terms of a seed to think about, is the fact that we could have this money, that the manager indicated, might bond to a million dollars in principle over time, right, twenty-year period of time. We could always maybe add to that what we have for 1 percent going toward housing. So, we got the 1 percent for human services funding, the 346,000 a year, maybe, at a later date through a study session. We analyze that and figure out what portion of that we already have toward housing, we could add to this pot of money and actually do something of value, and create some housing. So, again, we don't have to decide tonight. But I think it's something to think about, and at least capture this and think about it for another day.
And there are CD BG fund eligible, and home eligibility, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Branshaw.
Yeah, same, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that regardless of whether the long-term use of the money is something that is collaborative regionally with the county or not, that if we collected ourselves, we then have the option of deciding to be a collaborator and be able to evaluate the project that's being proposed, as opposed to saying, we think the county will do a good job of coming up with something.
Right.
So, do that. I, I have a question, though, about the draft resolution and the, the statement of what it would be used for. That in the, when the Association of Washington Cities provided us through the MSRC a sample resolution, there was a statement that was similar to, one, two, three, the fourth whereas, okay? And, and in that thing, it said, it said, put in a whereas that said, some sort of a statement as to the community's housing need. And then say, and, and since you used this last sentence that says, imposing the sales and use tax to address this need will benefit its citizens. But in our resolution, I don't read the recap of what the income is factual, you know, what our income situation is. But I think that we do have to say something about what our housing situation is. And whether it is, is that, you know, we have, we are, we are, Lakewood is a community that is, it, it, it has a significant amount of housing needing rehabilitation, as well as dealing with the growing problem of homelessness, of people who cannot find affordable housing. I think we need a statement like that, so that it, it talks about, when it says to address this need, that there's some statement, what is that need? I, I don't read that, whereas with having a need stated, as, as seems to be called for in the last thing, or as was suggested in the Association of Washington Cities, MSRC example resolution. So, you know, I don't want, I, I have no idea how that plays out. I think if you be too, too specific, you end up with people saying, well, you, you're supposed to use it for this. But you have to say something that sounds like a need. And I guess I, I don't know whether we want to wordsmith that whereas this evening, or whether we want to come, because we have time, or whether we want staff to come back and, and put a statement of need, or, or define a need, a very general one, I think.
We can just, we can put whereas's for every type of housing that's needed, and it's eligible. I mean, whereas is, and five bucks, get you a Starbucks.
Just need to do something.
Mr. Bulkey.
I guess I don't see that in the RCW. It says a resolution of intent to adopt legislation to authorize the maximum capacity of the tax in this section within six months of the date in which this section takes effect. Adoption of the resolution of intent in legislation requires a simple majority approval of the enacting legislative body. If a county has not adopted a resolution of intent, I don't know, maybe there's another section that talks about the resolution in the RCW, but I, I guess, I don't know that it's asking us to be real specific.
Couldn't you just add something there, Paul, in the second whereas here? We could mirror the language in the second whereas, where it talks about authorize the governing body to impose a sales tax for acquisition, construction, rehabilitation. You could add a whereas, it basically says Lakewood has a need for additional funds for the acquisition, construction, rehabilitation of affordable housing facilities, providing supporting housing. Be done. And then go on to some of the others.
Yeah, you, you could do that. I, I'm just saying that the, the resolution is not a resolution on how you're going to spend the money. The resolution is that you want to participate in this credit.
Exactly.
That's the purpose of the resolution. The ordinance, we can do anything we want with.
I'd, I'd agree with Mr. Bulkey. We just whack it down to bare minimum. Say we're going to do it. Say we're going to do it.
Just add what I said in there as one of the fourth whereas is before the the tax would be credited language. It's up to you guys, but. Or third, excuse me.
Yeah, add that in. I'm not the person to ask. I believe that whereas is a result of lawyers getting getting paid by the word historically.
Exactly. It takes at least a six minute increment to create one whereas. Now you're making progress. All right. We'll try it that way.
All right. So unless there's no other questions, what I'm hearing is that you want this to come back in front of you for action. We'll do the edits as suggested and then you want the additional research into what can be spent, how it can be spent, if there's criteria to follow in order to qualify for certain amounts. Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
And down the road, it would be interesting to think about if we had additional monies, what could you do? And that's a later study session, you know, with one percent monies.
All right. We now move to transportation capital improvement program update. Mr. Ott.
Okay, evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So this is a brief update on the transportation capital improvement program here for the city. Public Works gave an update back in the end of February and so now it's my pleasure to report back on all the great work that's been done this summer and also what we plan to do next year. So my first slide here. So the first slide is where we left off in February. This is what we had planned to do and I'm here to report tonight that those projects shown in red have been constructed. We're at completion with the exception of the last bit of work on Colonial Plaza. And I'll talk about that in a moment with some slides that demonstrate that. And one hundred and twenty-third, otherwise we've had a very successful construction season that we're wrapping up as well as the chip seal, which is shown in blue. Our design work is shown in green and yellow, the green being capital projects and the yellow being the chip seal that'll occur next year. And so next year that'll finish out the chip seal in the Lake City neighborhood. So Colonial Plaza is quickly approaching completion. We have the open house scheduled from five to eight P M. on September fourteenth. This week, if you're out there, you'll see the beginnings of the wood tops put on the bench. It's a high quality finish on that. Looks great. We looked at the material last week, so that'll start this week and then soon thereafter the street lighting. And it's just amazing the before and after photos to see what it looked like at the beginning of the year to where it is now. Really makes a significant change to the city.
Are we really going to have streetlights by the fourteenth?
That is the goal. So the contractor told us today that they'd be shipped tomorrow from the Midwest, so.
Was that the cantonary lighting or just the streetlights? All of it, huh?
So what the contractor's done, because this is an issue of supply, material supply, not construction, he's run all his wiring up to the poles. So as soon as they arrive, they can immediately install them, but it's really a function of pole supply. If not, that will be the only item that we can't get finished in in time, but our goal is to finish the project and the contractor's committed to that. So here's another project that we're very proud of, one hundred and twenty-third. Nowadays, in the Puget Sound region, we don't get to build new roads very often. So here we had the opportunity to extend one hundred and twenty-third from Bridgeport to Forty-seventh. That connection, that would be very important. It has curb gutter sidewalk landscaping. So this week, the contractor is putting in the irrigation and topsoil ahead of putting the plantings in a little bit later in early September. Late August, early September. But again, another project that really transforms the area, the street lighting's up. So the other element is the roadway striping. We have to let the pavement sit a minimum of twenty-one days before we can put the striping material that we use down on all our projects. As an aside, that striping material will last ten years, so that's why we do that. It's good, good value. So we wrapped up Gravely Lake Drive from Silicon to Bridgeport. Project turned out great. The photo, the after photo almost looks like a rendering. If you look closely, the paint's scuffed in front of the Pierce Transit bus stop, so you can tell it's not, but it really turned out well. And that included some modifications to the streetlights on both ends that got rid of, or the traffic loops were cut and we've put a video detection in. So that turned out very well. And then another project that took away a perennial potholes all during the winter is Custer Road Overlay. So that's completed it from Silicon all the way down to Bridgeport. We picked up where the Bridgeport project had left off. If you drive through there tonight, you will see on the little island that the white delineators are up now. So that's to try to make that more visual to drivers that they have to turn right. We've had that ped pole knocked down a few times. Whoops.
Mr. Brensler.
Thank you. On on this particular project in the handout that you gave us, it's worded as though it's completed. And yet it was done to rural standards without sidewalks. And so in I understood that that it was, that the sidewalks were just because of funding going to have to be phased in later. Okay, and so I didn't necessarily consider this to be a completed project. But how are you looking at sidewalks along Custer where where there's a there are some stretches of sidewalks to nowhere along that road?
So on the south side of Custer from just a little bit past, and I'll go back a slide, from eighty-eight. That was an early, I believe it was an early city project. It was before I started with the city. It runs along that south side. But on the north side, to get sidewalk in would take right away acquisition, especially at the signal at John Dower and Custer. So there would be some additional costs there. I do believe there's room to put sidewalk from John Dower down to Bridgeport, so we could fill in that piece. And in the budget in the unfunded section, I believe there is a project to put the sidewalk in on Custer. I'd have to go research that, though.
Because, you know, you know, my interpretation of how we have a comprehensive plan for the development of our arterials was that they would be developed with with sidewalks in the in the longer longer phase to be able to go and do that, you know? And I just would not like to see this become one project of where for fiscal reasons, we delayed the sidewalks and then we delayed them indefinitely. Because it it looks different than the other project. When you compare this to one twenty-third or you compare this to to others, you know? And it's our commitment to being a walkable as well as a drivable community. And, you know, it begs that issue along that, along all the arterials, Silicon Boulevard and Custer particular.
So this is a typical shot of our chip seal that just got completed this, just, I believe it was a week and a half ago in the Lake City area. We do a fog seal over the top before we do a striping that holds that material in a little bit better and gives it a very finished look to it. Gives us a little bit more life, so that got wrapped up. Like I mentioned, next year we'll finish out the Lake City area. And then this is up on one hundred and fourth and this is some of our radar feedback signs. We also have some on order to go on to Elwood. And as you can see there, the solar panels, so we're putting solar panels in where we can to save some cost, long term cost there. The photo on the, on my right, you're right here, that's, the technician actually snapped that photo right as it was going from twenty to nineteen. So the sign is functioning correctly, but he happened to just hit it right at that point. So a vehicle is slowing down. So they do work. So where are we going in twenty twenty? So you'll see that projects on the twenty nineteen slide that were green have now turned red for the most part. Starting at the top left, you have the Onyx Drive projects. Then we have a portion of Silicon that will be overlaid from Weller to Custer. Veterans Drive, that we gave an update on the design on that recently. That'll be another project in blue, the chip seal that I keep mentioning will finish out Lake City. And then we also have the signal replacement at Lakewood and one hundredth. Where we're going design wise, we have an overlay on one hundred and eighth. It's gotten to a condition where it needs overlaid now. We'll start moving into the Lakeview area for chip seal. And then we'll continue Gravely Lake Drive and that is funded as a full curb gutter sidewalk for Gravely, project seventy-seven. And then I wanted to put in a quick slide on street lighting. And I know there's a lot of colors up here and that's because we deal with three purveyors. And there's a fourth color that's even, in some cases, we have the purveyors on each side of the street. But P S E can go ahead and put in streetlights. Council has authorized their approval for for doing that and they've done a substantial amount of work. But these are the areas we plan over the next five years to put street lighting in and which purveyors that's in. But that'll finish off the Oak Brook area and the area to the east of Lake Silicon. And that'll put a substantial completion, complete the street lighting. There still are a few streets to light, but that really makes a big difference here in the city. Got quite a bit of it lit. And some of it will go in as well during the Onyx projects from eighty-seventh to ninety-seventh and from Garnet to Phillips.
So going back a slide, if you would. So with regard to the future street lighting locations, are those going to be on new poles, aluminum poles, existing wooden telephone poles? What's what's the plan there?
So in, for P S E, they can be put on wood poles or even new wood poles. But when the city puts in our own street lighting, they're typically on metal or concrete poles. Yeah, and we we try for the concrete poles on our arterials typically because that matches what we've done in the past.
So as we're transitioning into more and better improvements, are we going to transition into more city owned, meaning aluminum or concrete? Likely aluminum in the neighborhood areas for the lighting?
That is correct. So we always like to measure what we're doing to see if we're making progress. And so this is a roll up. This is all four hundred and thirty-one lane miles of the city. The average or the weighted average for the, all the streets in the city and you can see we're trending upwards. We're making progress. So the investment, both in the principal arterials and the residential, we keep going up on that. So we're making good progress. And with that, if there's any questions?
Questions for Mr. Ott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to a review of interlocal agreement for multi jurisdictional civil disturbance team. Chief Zarro.
For the civil disturbance team with the rest of the co-op cities. As you recall, I think I've, I've been saying for months now, this is kind of at some point that we've been working on. The the insufficient agreement with Metro SWAT, we pulled out of that. And then as a result of that, we had an agreement for the civil disturbance team. So we suspended full team activities. We maintained our own element in case of anything small that might happen in Lakewood. In the meantime, there was a desire to maintain a a larger team with the other co-op cities, but we were clearly going to need an agreement. And that's what we have according to my disagreement that was, that, I don't know if you are aware, but the rest of the co-op cities did form a, so a small tactical response team. And in doing so, developed a new agreement that for that that was reviewed by WCIA and follow legal quotes. And this mirrors a lot of that, this this language. And it's been reviewed by our legal by WCIA and met with their approval. And you can see there's provisions for oversight, for operation, for funding and for, of course, indemnification and liability sharing. So that's what I have before you. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Zarro. So wasn't there a request recently to back up? Just based on mutual aid? That didn't come to fruition because the civil disturbance didn't, wasn't so disturbing?
That was, yes, a request from the city of Tacoma to assist them down the Thai flats. During that, they had, I guess, what was being predicted to be a very volatile mix of people down there at the ICE detention center. So they had asked for assistance at the last minute, said that they didn't do your access rights, so they they weren't going to use that for all. So a lot of that is intelligence based on what they're, they kind of predict.
So how does this interface with that situation? Because, you know, the greatest, the reason I ask is that the likelihood is if there's going to be a major civil disturbance, it's going to be in Tacoma. Although we could have it outside the base here. I think those are probably the two most likely locations in the county. And Tacoma's not a party. So if we have this team, does Tacoma ask the team to come or does it call up Mike Zarro and said, we need backup from Lakewood? But how would that work?
No, the the request would be from the team and that would be but yet not just one little, one element or one city's part of the team. It would be a request from the civil disturbance team to come in and back them on whatever it is they have. And one other facility that we want to point out in Lakewood that would be a potential is that we do have a small ICE office here. So we do have that potential in addition to military patients and any sort of volatile incident that may engender that kind of civil disturbance.
Mr. Waylon.
Provision on cost sharing in section eight. So in the event of liability or inaction, we're going to share equally in the financial burden of litigation. But with regard to the standup of the team, we've got eight of the twenty members and we are putting in a pro rata share of the budgetary cost based on population. That make sense? So you got two cost items. You got cost to the maintenance support of this whole endeavor, which seems to be pro rata based on population.
Right.
And then you got cost in the event of litigation, which seems to be shared equally. Right?
Right.
So you got Silicon, who doesn't have a single person on the team, has six thousand people or one tenth of what Lakewood has. And they're going to share equally in the hit of a litigation cost. That's what this is telling me, right?
So I would interpret that, yes. And and with costs, one, one thing to note is that there's nothing, there are no startup costs.
Right.
Would be incurred if we entered into this agreement because we have all the equipment and everything from the the team already made. equipment and everything from the team already made.
And just to be clear again, looking at Section Eight, Subparagraph A on our page thirty, the costs to be shared equally do not include punitive damages. It's compensatory damages, but punitive is certainly sculpted out of this whole thing. So, that would be on us if we have an officer involved, right?
That's true.
Okay. Just to be clear with everyone.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief. I want to follow up on something Deputy Mayor Waylon said, I'll say a little differently. When I read this, I interpreted it exactly the way he did. But in my thinking, it went, are we leaving the door open for a road we've already gone down with regard to our SWAT team and what has happened in the past? I don't want to see the city, I mean, Silicon gets, has no one in the game, but we can be sued, and they're going to pay the equal part? I thought that's what Fife said. I thought that's what the rest of these cities said in the past, and it seems to me this council was the one that got stuck with the bill. Do we have something in this that prevents that from happening again?
We do not, and really, it all comes down to punitive damages that Deputy Mayor Waylon asked about.
Is that wise?
Well, I will, I mean, it's one of the risks that you weigh against the benefit of having a fully capable civil disturbance team. I mean, I, believe me, I recognize the risk as much as everybody does, and it's just that risk, work benefit of having that team.
I agree with you that I think the team is warranted. Where I am having problems with this is, and I mean no disrespect, a fool will repeat this history, and we're not foolish, and neither are you. And so, I'm wondering, can we build something into this that clearly states to the other cities, "Look, Lakewood is not going to carry your freight, Silicon and Bonny Lake and these others"? Because, like I say, we're leaving the door open for repeat if that should occur.
Well, can I add, Mayor, real quick? The one thing that may be missing in this, and I apologize for not having completely thoroughly read it, I'm reading it now, I don't see any dispute resolution paragraph that would provide teeth that would hold a member agency to task. So, if we had a dispute over the cost sharing, an incident arose, there was the appropriate communication about the issue and resolution, but for whatever reason, one agency says, "Jeez, we can't afford it". There's no teeth in this by way of an attorney fee provision or an ADR provision that leads the parties to mediation and an arbitration of a dispute if one arises with a prevailing party entitled to recovery of their fees and costs, should they prevail in arbitration. I think we need some teeth in this document to hold them accountable. So, that would be what I would recommend.
To make sure I understand, that point, I get the point of having some dispute resolution in there. Is that, is, are you, does that have as a separate issue from punitive damages, or is that?
Well, I guess it's in here, maybe I'm looking at Section Eight J, City Attorney, I think maybe it's covered in Eight J, take a look at that. So, in the event a signatory agency fails to tell them to provide its payment of the equal portion of the shared expenses, another signature, a signatory agency can do it, and then the agency that failed to pay is liable to the payor, plus a fees incurred in the collection of those monies. So, I think we have it there, but I don't know if you have an ADR provision, maybe you don't need it, maybe you've thought about that. But, it seems to me before we pursue payment, maybe there's a provision, we need to get these people to the table. I don't know, I throw it out there for consideration, as long as we've got the J section, I think I'm more comfortable now. Mayor, you may have a thought there too, but at least we've got some teeth in that Section J.
Mr. Mayor.
Eight J.
Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, am I to understand that Silicon and the other surrounding areas are not at the table during this discussion?
You mean, both of the?
The resolution.
The, the, both of the agreements. They've all reviewed it already, but they're, they have minimal say, and that's because they don't, currently have people, but they've reviewed it, and to my understanding, they endorse it.
Okay, all right. Well, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
I'd join the Deputy Mayor in suggestion that we have an ADR provision, so that if there is a dispute, it's worked out outside of the public arena. I think it would be better for the cities involved to meet and mediate than to sue each other.
Can you tell me what you have? I'm assuming the D and ER stand for dispute resolution.
Alternate, al- alternate, or alternative dispute resolution. It's mediation, mediation or arbitration, mediation.
Now, would something like that cover punitive damages, is that where?
No.
No, so that would still be a separate?
Correct.
You've got the language in here, so if there was an issue that people kind of agreed to disagree about, you'd have an ADR provision to address it, but your contract provides, I think fairly clearly, for the allocation of punitive damages, it remains on the city that created the issue.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's not, doesn't change the substance, just the process.
Okay.
It's all about the process here.
So, as I read the draft agreement, and I try to look at, how does this differ from the situation we found ourselves with the SWAT team? It, essentially, all the compensatory damages and all the other damages and everything turned out to be covered by insurance, except for the punitive damages. In this agreement, that exact same situation would exist if Lakewood, as the largest entity in providing, I assume, perhaps the greatest number of people, that, thus having the greatest likelihood that someone would target in a lawsuit, an individual for punitive damages, this would say, "We have no argument other than to cover them ourselves". You know, that's the way this is, this is, now, that's at least clearer than it was before, but that is different, and it's somewhat different than what we'd have wished for under the past agreement. But Chief, you said, you know, that the reason for having an agreement that essentially exposes us to the same liability as we had before with the SWAT team, was to get to a fully capable civil disturbance team, and having access to it. And I guess the question is, how much more fully capable does a team organized under this agreement from a core group of people that you have trained in the department that are augmented through getting assistance from wherever, the state police, Tacoma, or whatever? I mean, I mean, if the increase is greatly significant, that's one thing, if it's minimal, then maybe, then absorbing the, these risks is not necessarily in our best interest. And I don't know how you decide that, not having a great deal of history with having to deploy civil disturbance teams, or am I wrong about that? If we deployed, under the old agreement, civil disturbance teams more than I might be aware.
You're right about that, and it is somewhat immeasurable, if you want to compare, the, try and calculate an amount of hard benefit to compare to a calculated amount of risk, both of those are sort of hard to, I guess, with risk, we experience what that can cause to, but it's hard to actually measure what the benefit would be. I can just tell you that the team that we have, the core element we have now, could handle a fairly small civil demonstration, depending on what activities those folks are used in. Because you can have, like we saw in 2015, you can have between fifteen and a hundred people who are marching down the road and blocking the street, you really don't need a whole lot other than to observe from a distance, but you can have ten people that are bent on creating chaos and causing damage and injury, and that would require a much broader team. So, it's, it just really depends on what you're faced with.
I guess my question was, how well-trained a team do you need as opposed to well-trained leaders that can take competent law enforcement folks and execute a control in a civil disturbance situation?
I would, well, again, it depends on what you're faced with, if it's, I would not rely on well-trained people to give direction on the fly, like in the middle of an incident or demonstration, to give direction to other officers who haven't had that kind of training just on the fly, because a lot of that does require special trainings, where everybody's acting in concert, and everybody knows what the others do. That, I think, would be a bigger recipe for disaster than this. That is where, if we weren't, didn't have a team under an agreement like this, then I would have to rely on the availability of Tacoma State Patrol, and relying on their availability is the sort of thing.
Any other questions?
I do have one question for you, though, with regard to this, and it's sort of measuring how much effort we expend moving forward. So, the language with, on punitive damages, and I can go back and talk a bit of cities about that, but I know that this is where they are. And so, I, I just, if, I could talk about an ADR, with, and I think there might be some room there, but with the other, I just, I don't know. So, if there's still some potential consideration with the ADR language and punitive damages, or punitive damages language, the way it is, then there might be some room to make the adjustments that you're looking for. Beyond that, like I said, I'm fine not pursuing it, if that's a decision, it's just more a matter of, I know that it would be fruitless for you to go back to that and ask for change in that language.
And it may be unenforceable.
Okay, both ways.
Mr. Waylon.
I'm as comfortable as you can be on the issue of punitive damages with the language in here. I think dovetailing with the code change we made, I'm somewhat comfortable that the council for Lake City, future councils, would have the authority to review the issue before deciding to indemnify it, I think that's the way our current code works. So, it's incumbent upon the force to obviously adequately train as you do, and to do the best we can to cover those officers involved in these various endeavors, to do the right thing by way of good training and good leadership. And, we can't necessarily control the tail that wags a dog when it comes to litigation, as you well know, better than anyone. So, I think you've done as best you can. The ADR provision's kind of a gimme, but it basically allows the parties to have a conversation before they go to guns, so to speak. And I think that's helpful, helpful and healthy to do in these kinds of contracts.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo the Deputy Mayor's comments, you've, I have faith in the police, I have faith in you. I'm probably a little less comfortable about the punitive damage than the Deputy Mayor. I, and as you pointed out, the signatories to this have every reason to accept it as it is, because they're not carrying their fair share of the water, as far as I'm concerned. And that's where my concern about this rests, is are we leaving the door open for another city council to have to deal with what we've dealt with before? So, I, I know you're not going to get anywhere with them, I mean, but I'm not as comfortable with that punitive damage section, and I suspect, I can't speak for the others, but I'm, I will, I'm in favor of this, I won't work against you there. But there is a, there's a big question in my mind about where this may go.
I agree. I will say that operationally, where we tried to address some of that, quite frankly, a lot of what, where we failed, I failed in the, with the SWAT stuff, was taking on too much of a leadership role as Lakewood. There was, no, there was me, the team commander, the team leader, the sniper team leader, the lead negotiator, we're all part of Lakewood, and some of that is us seeing a need, a leadership need, and stepping into it. But I think one of the things that was addressed in here is the commander from different agencies, and Lieutenant Paul Line, for us, has been involved in this since before we started this, and he's getting tired of me beating him up when everyone talks about this, about making sure that we take the backseat, and that's one of the, also, with any oversight committee decision about personnel, that's also going to be one my focus.
May I say something, Mayor? All due respect, you did not fail. That was a different situation from the one we're talking about now, Chief, and I am not going to let that comment pass. Thank you.
So, as I say, I'm a little more comfortable with this one, if for no other reason, well, we have revised our process as far as indemnification goes, which gives me a slight degree of comfort. But if you look at where the freeway underchanges are, and where the bases, and where these other communities are, we're much more likely to need help than we are likely to give help. So, I see that balancing in favor of moving forward with this.
To give an example, where a need for this might come up that's completely unforeseen, a few weeks ago, we had to demonstrate on Forty-Seventh Avenue overpass, that we're demonstrating the telescope that's being built in Hawaii.
Wow.
It's, that, I mean, yeah, who would have thought? You know, I'd actually read something about that, coincidentally, like a week earlier, but it's, it's a cultural thing, that it was, we do have a lot of native islander folks living in Lakewood in and around, and that's where their demonstration took place, very peaceful. They started to lock traffic, though, and they dispersed when they were corporately asked, and it ended peacefully, but my point is, is that sometimes those things can just stick you out in the wind.
Probably. Anything else, Chief?
That is it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And can I, just to clarify my margin of error, to, to approach this about the, okay?
Yeah.
Get you a paragraph, I'm sure.
Okay.
She might be done already. Reports by the city manager, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening to council. Actually, I'd like to start off with Chief Zarro and ask him to give you an update on two items. One is a call for service at Champion's, I believe, last night, or late yesterday afternoon, and then the second on a grant that the chief is pursuing through JAG.
So, the first is an incident that would say is similar to what we've heard called swine around the country, is basically a false report. Somebody called nine-one-one, said that they were trying to be in the parking lot of Champion's, shooting a gun, and then was making their way towards the club. Now, this is right across the street from the New World VIP, where we actually had the homicide last year, and not so different than active shooter incidents that we've heard about around the country. So, officers responded, they actually found somebody in the parking lot that matched the description of what was given to nine-one-one, took him into custody at that point, nobody was injured, turns out to be. point, nobody was injured, uh, turns out to be false, uh, and they, I don't know, released him, explained the best they could what happened. Um, the, the person obviously was not happy, I wouldn't be either, um, but seemed to understand, and I talked to the officers about it tonight, seemed to understand the reason that went behind it. Um, the other steps that we're taking is actively investigating and making calls. So it's not always easy when it's, you know, you get masked phone numbers and different cell phones, you know, getting different towers, but, um, we, we are going to look into it, do, do what we can to, uh, catch that person, hold them accountable. So, any, uh, any questions on that one?
Questions?
So the other, uh, it's a JAG grant application the city manager mentioned, and it's, um, one that, um, I don't know, for better or for worse, we're eligible for due to permits. Uh, it's, uh, forty thousand dollars, it can be used for training and equipment. The past, years past, we paid for some in-car cameras, we paid for some officer wellness training, uh, and this year, after targeting the command staff, one of the requests that we had, we applied for, um, was for, uh, noise suppressors for rifles. Uh, now, the, um, you're not the first to think of this, it's been sort of a trend, um, at different agencies around the state anyway. Um, and I can point to Kent, C, uh, C-TAC, or excuse me, Port of Seattle, Renton, and I think Spokane, that have done this and for a few reasons. Um, one is simply for the, the hearing protection of the officers, not only during training, but on active incidents should they, um, uh, got fit out to deploy them. Uh, but there's also a tactical, um, benefit in that when your, rifles are very loud and officers aren't walking into incidents wearing hearing protection, if there is an active shooter or something like that where they're in a building moving through and having to, to shoot, that, that loud noise is, uh, can create temporary deafness, it can prevent them from hearing, um, other shots being fired around the building and locating the, um, where the bad guy is. So the, uh, the, um, goal is to have all patrol rifles outfitted with these suppressors, and, um, we think that both the tactical and the health benefits, um, were justified. Uh, the, one of the provisions of the grant is that, or the requirements is that our governing body be notified of our intent to use it, and that is why we're here. There's no action required, just, um, a, uh, that I, I present this to you, and then we allow the public comment for thirty days before it's, uh, final of the robot P O J. So if you happen to answer any questions at the beginning, it's, it's more for notification.
Questions? So noted. Thank you. Mr. Garfield.
Uh, next up, I'd like to call up, uh, planning manager Tiffany Spear to review two letters with you, one that you've seen before, and that is an updated draft on a letter prepared by PCRC, and I know there's a couple of members on this body that sit on that, uh, to PSRC regarding Vision 2050. And as we were, as we previously reported to you, we also have a draft City of Lakewood letter specific to our community, and so Ms. Spear would like to review both of those with you for your feedback and, and input. And, uh, in regards to the PCRC letter, um, that is going to go to the PCRC board at their September, I believe it's twelfth, um, meeting to, to finalize so that it can get into, uh, PSRC by their deadline.
So, good evening once again, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, I've just moved out of the way, so those who want to be looking at the PowerPoint presentation here can do so hopefully easily. So, um, as the city manager just mentioned, you have two things in front of you. First is the letter from Lakewood, that draft, and then the second is a letter, at this point, uh, the draft is still subject to edits. Councilmember Whalen did provide me some the evening that this was discussed at the PCRC, but they're going to be collecting other edits between now and September third from all jurisdictions. And so this September twelfth letter from PCRC is still subject to change. So that's there, um, for, for the discussion this evening, should you wish it. So what I wanted to do though is just very quickly, and I understand this is one of the last things on the agenda tonight, but walk through Vision 2050 itself, just so everybody has an understanding of the basics of this document. So Vision 2050 is an update to Vision 2040. Uh, it's regional planning and it's taking the horizon of that planning out for another ten years from where Vision 2040 sits. It applies to the four counties within the PSRC area, which is Pierce, Kitsap, King and Snohomish, and then all of the cities within those counties. Vision 2050 includes a regional growth strategy, multi-county planning policies which trickle down into the county-wide planning policies and then trickle into the Lakewood comprehensive planning policies. And then there's regional actions that are suggested for the first time, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, later. There's, uh, an overall goal of taking sixty-five percent of the reason, region's population growth target or, or forecast and seventy-five percent of that employment and locate those within regional growth centers and within, uh, certain distance of high-capacity transit. So, um, trying to hone in a little bit more even than Vision 2040 does, where people and jobs are going to be going within the next, um, uh, vision documents, planning horizon. And then it also talks about what PSRC will be reviewing as it looks at local comprehensive plans to certify them over time. So within Vision 2050, you see the multi-county planning policies and the regional growth strategy, and then tied to that, as you see in this graphic, are both a regional transportation plan and then a regional economic strategy, both of which are documents that various boards or committees within PSRC work on and adopt on a regular basis as well. Um, I just wanted to point out that there are goals, policies and actions within Vision 2050, and each one of those have specific definitions and, and reasons to be. Uh, the goals are desired outcomes, they set the tone for integrated approach and common framework for the policies. Policies provide overall guidance and direction for planning and decision-making at regional and local levels. One of the questions though that's being raised by multiple jurisdictions is what the term guidance means, because guidance is never defined anywhere by PSRC. So how mandatory and how restrictive is that guidance going to prove to be? And then there's actions, and again, there's some new actions in there that are suggested for the first time, they're not updates from Vision 2040, they're new, um, but they are policy, uh, implementing policies and outline responsibilities for PSRC as well as local governments and other partners. So the regional growth strategy is based on these numbers. Uh, right now, or at least at twenty seventeen, there were about two point two million jobs and four million people within the four counties. It's now forecasted between now and twenty fifty to grow, um, one point two million in jobs and one point eight million in people. And so the question becomes, um, where are they going to be targeted and how much does each, uh, county and each city need to be planning for? And so that's where the regional growth strategy comes in. And you have within the regional growth strategy, and I know this is too small to read, but it's color-coded and, and the circles or the dots on the map all indicate what are called different regional geographies. There are metro cities, core cities, high-capacity transit communities, other cities and towns, urban unincorporated areas, rural areas, and then natural resource and agricultural land, tribal land, and then military installations. The idea here, um, per the language within Vision 2050, is that as you look at the, um, proposed strategy, it's going to say, so much percentage of this growth that we know is coming, is going to go to X, Y and Z, the different geographies. And is that going to make sense? Is it realistic or not, is what jurisdictions are reacting to right now. So breaking it down by geography, under the metro cities, uh, within Pierce County, that is simply the city of Tacoma, uh, the suggested, uh, growth is thirty-six percent of the population and forty-four percent of the employment would go into the city of Tacoma. The core cities, which includes Lakewood, but also Puyallup, UP and Auburn, would take twenty-eight, between twenty-eight and twenty-nine percent and thirty-five percent of the, uh, employment. High-capacity transit, Dupont, Fife, Furcrest, and then Tacoma's annexation area, twenty-one percent of the population, thirteen percent of employment. Cities and towns, so the rest of the cities and towns of Pierce County are listed there, seven percent of the population, six percent of employment. Then you have urban unincorporated, and for the Pierce County area, that's between four and five percent of that total population number going into the unincorporated area that's urban. Rural areas, um, would only take, I want to say, um, three percent, and you'll see that in a moment. Major military installations, rural areas, natural resource lands and tribal lands, none of those are assigned any growth because that's outside of, um, either what they're there for or what PSRC can deal with. Within the milit- major military installations, um, you see their, uh, expectations for the military installations. This is the first time that this has been incorporated into a vision document, and Lakewood was very involved over the last three or four years as, as jurisdictions were trying to force PSRC to recognize the fact that these installations are here, not only JBLM, but, um, over in Kitsap County and also up in Snohomish. But what is being voiced within Vision 2050 right now are these expectations. So ongoing coordination between the installation and, uh, local government and regional, um, impacts regarding transportation in particular, uh, supporting multimodal commute planning and mode-split goals for the installation itself, and then having completed joint land use studies or coordinated planning efforts. And of course, here, uh, Lakewood's been very involved with that. The most recent joint land use study for JBLM was finished in twenty fifteen.
So, you go back on the, on the wording of that, is that their wording?
Yes.
Major military installations are defined?
Major military installations are defined, yes. And that's the more than five thousand enlisted or service personnel. That's the classification they created.
So officers don't count? I mean, it's, uh, the, the wording strikes me as odd or uninformed. It should be, so, active duty and civilian personnel.
Okay, we can certainly suggest that edit.
I don't even know what it, yeah.
Yeah, assume, is that encompassed in, uh, Naval Base Bremerton?
Yes, yes. There's five that are identified, JBLM, and then the, the various ones over by Naval Base Kitsap, and then, um, the Snohomish County Naval Base as well in, in Everett.
Yeah, Banger and, uh, and Bremerton both qualify.
So coming back to the population, and again, I know this is very small text here, but what you'll see by color bar is the various ways that this regional, uh, preferred alternative for regional growth would assign, uh, growth within the various counties. So gray is Snohomish, orange is Pierce, purple is Kitsap, and that teal is King. And then within Pierce right now, there are ranges suggested, and that is assuming that the jurisdictions, Pierce County and Tacoma in particular, but other jurisdictions within the county all decide and agree on what that, um, split would be between the various types of jurisdictions for population assignment within Pierce County. So, of course, most of the growth would be going into King County, given its size and the size of its current cities, but Pierce has a significant amount of, uh, growth as well. Within, uh, the metropolitan city, which would be Tacoma again, it's somewhere between a hundred and thirty-four and a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. For the core cities, again, Lakewood, Puyallup and University Place, somewhere between eighty-five thousand and a hundred and one thousand total. For the high-capacity transit communities, some of which in, uh, Pierce County are cities and some of which is out in the unincorporated urban area again, would be between the thirty-five thousand and fifty-two thousand number. Cities and towns, about twenty-five thousand total. Urban unincorporated, once more, there's a range of about a twenty thousand, um, gap between forty and sixty thousand, and then the rural area between three and six percent. For employment, same idea, same color scheme, uh, there's not the range though, there's just the numbers that are assigned based on, uh, the size of the various jurisdictions as they sit. Uh, but basically forty-eight percent in Tacoma, twenty-three percent in the core cities, thirteen percent in high-capacity transit, six in cities and towns, eight percent in urban unincorporated, and two percent for, uh, the Pierce County various geographies regarding employment. Yeah.
Is this where we have the discussion about what ensued at the PCRC and what is, I'm gathering, this, the sticking point has to do with this population vis a vis employment mix? And you've got in your packet the little map with the dots on it, the heat map, and the preferred alternative, I guess increases our employment ratio from point seven six to like point eight, I'm just doing it off the top of my head, between now and twenty fifty. So if our goal is to be an employment-based area and not have everybody running up to King County every day, um, this plan does not even begin to achieve that.
This plan keeps it as the status quo in terms of more jobs going into King County and more houses going everywhere else. And so within the PCRC letter, and then right now, the way the Lakewood letter is written, it simply refers to and supports what's in the PCR letter, is a conversation about what's termed the jobs-housing balance. And this is, um, to talking about exactly what council member Bokey just mentioned, the fact that the way Vision 2050 currently sets things out, there will continue to be more jobs than houses planned for in King County and more houses than jobs planned for in Pierce, Kitsap and Snohomish Counties. And, um, the argument that has been voiced, uh, by Pierce County and by other jurisdictions now following along, is that this makes no sense, particularly given the growing transportation congestion, air quality issues regarding transportation congestion. Why are we planning to continue the same problem? Let's look at an additional correction regarding jobs and housing to where, first of all, King County starts to, uh, create more housing units up there where the jobs that they already have are. And going forward, let's get some jobs located out where all the housing already is, which is outside of King County. So that's the main point that's included in the Pierce County Regional Council letter, starting on the bottom of page one. And then, again, the, the Lakewood letter, rather than repeat that verbatim, simply says that, um, Lakewood supports those comments in the PCRC letter.
Is it, would it be possible for the Lakewood letter, you put, you succinctly summarized that about one sentence earlier?
Sure.
We start out just by saying that. "We feel this exacerbates the transportation problem, which will only get worse with time by concentrating additional jobs in King County and housing everywhere else. We need to flip that."
Sure.
Yeah, I echo that. The lead should be, and you mentioned, why plan to continue the same problem? That's your lead, paragraph two, and then go down and start listing. Did you, I, I just drew my paper up here and I thought to myself, bullshit.
That's another way to put it.
No, I understood.
This is, this is the same old nonsense I've been listing through for five, fill in the blank, years. What's changed?
Got it.
It's, it's extended and additional ten years in the future, instead of, they're just pushing it out. We're the same.
This is...
Yeah. Okay. So one of the things that is, um, within Vision 2050, after you get through this basic huge discussion about regional growth strategy and where are the jobs and where are the people going to be planned for to go, then we get into aligning the growth targets. So now, once that growth strategy, whether exactly as it's written right now or it gets edited between now and when it's adopted next spring, then cities and counties need to update their comprehensive plans in the years twenty-three or twenty-four to accommodate the targets that are then stemming from what Vision 2050 includes. And then, uh, PSRC will review that in terms of going forward for transportation-related issues and whether or not they can certify the comprehensive plan and make it qualify for transportation funding.
Okay, I got a question there.
Yes.
When you say to certify the comprehensive plan, do they actually have a statutory role in certifying that, or is that Congress's role?
It is PSRC's role as a metropolitan planning organization, as, and as the regional transportation planning organization, to look at transportation-related content of a comprehensive plan.
I get that.
Yeah, and so they look at that and they certify whether or not it is in compliance with PSRC's, um, transportation planning as well. So the, where the rub comes is what is transportation-related? Is it strictly a number? Is it strictly your, um, transportation element within your comp plan? Or does it get wider than that? Cause someone could argue your housing element also affects transportation, so we should have the authority to, to certify that as well.
So that's all done by PSRC?
Correct.
Kind of like a star chamber.
Correct. You're welcome.
Comrade Stalin.
Yeah.
Um...
Sorry, I missed the sentence.
I'm just going to move through to what I think are going to be, um, good conversation for the council this evening. This was used originally for a different group. All right, so there are multi-county planning policies in addition to the, uh, growth strategy, and with each one of these goals, there are a number of policies. And so that's where, um, some editing will occur based on specific language and specific areas of concern, and again, those are included in the PCRC letter. Uh, but there's also in here, um, should anyone wish to do this, you can take a look at the policies with, uh, the link that's provided, and I can certainly provide that to any of you who wish to look at it. Uh, what you'll notice though here is for the first time... What you'll notice, though, here is for the first time, there is a goal specific to climate change. That is a new focus for PSRC. And there's also a new focus on housing to take it not just to, PSRC provides these policies that local governments enact, but there's now, and we'll see this later in the presentation as well, a regional focus on housing. And what does that turn into? What, how, how is local control affected by the fact that now PSRC is proposing to do regional housing actions? And here we go. So there's also equity, developing a regional equity strategy, and how does that get incorporated into comprehensive planning at the local level? Developing a regional housing strategy, including a regional housing needs assessment, best practices, and coordination with other housing efforts. What does that mean in terms of certification or review by PSRC?
What do you think the equity strategy, that's an interesting one.
Yeah. And there's been, quite frankly, some confusion between equitable and equity. And those two terms can mean very different things. And they're getting blurred at the PSRC level right now. So I think the intent is to have the ability to say, we're not turning back the clock, but we're trying to maybe correct some instances of the past where, for instance, redlining, that's probably the most clear one related to the planning that's going on here, but trying to make sure that as decisions are made, as policies are written, there's a step back and some questions asked, are we doing this in an equitable, sorry, in a way that takes equity into account? And racial and social, so economic demographics as well as racial backgrounds. So it's very complicated. It's very touchy. PSRC has now hired a staff person related specifically to this issue, and how this will play out, I can't predict. But it is a new focus for PSRC.
So does this, does this mean we get to sue Seattle to block their transportation funds unless they continue to house poor people?
Potentially.
I mean, I think honestly, we, we can get particularly politically correct and advocate for things in this that will give us some leverage in the future.
I, I think at some point, we're going to need to define as a city what we feel that means and that we're going to go forward based upon that. Now, I, I have in my mind what I think it means. I think the guys in Seattle are not going to agree with because they live in neighborhoods that don't have poor people and don't have minorities. So they're going to work very hard to not, to make sure that that doesn't change, is my, is my guess. So they'll, they'll work incredibly hard to make sure that they don't get any low-income housing that they don't want. So I'm not sure what, I, I, I call BS on when they say equity because I, I, I think they're saying that because they think they need to say it, but they're writing a check that they're not willing to cash. That's what I would, I would, I would challenge the PSRC on that immediately, saying, what do you mean with that? What are your actionable items here to actually establish equity? How will Lakewood become more like Mercer Island and Mercer Island look more like Lakewood? Okay? Or take specific neighborhoods in Seattle? Okay? So say, well, how will Magnolia, how much low-income housing is Magnolia Bluff going to take in the next 30 years? And we want actionable items. So if they don't, we, they will have to do it. That's what equity means to me. Equity means stepping up to the plate. And I don't, and I, and I, I question that. They're not going to want to step up to the plate because they're the ones that are going to have to pay. So I agree with you if they is who is voting, a minority, a larger, a larger base, but that's not the decision-makers in this process. This is staff-driven, Seattle, King County Council-driven, Sound Transit. But those people, by virtue of their positions, are virtue signaling the entire time. So I believe that they can be entrapped into doing what they should actually do, where there's a possibility of it.
Mayor?
And be careful what you wish for in Seattle.
Yeah.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a sidebar with the mayor about getting Pierce, or King County and Seattle to step up to the plate. So I have a suggestion, and it doesn't start with the words "bold." Can we make, can we suggest an edit to this?
Sure.
Oh, good. Develop a regional equity strategy to make racial and social equity and free market opportunity, that'll prove what Mr. Bokey was saying, central to PSRC's work because social equity and social justice are antithetical to the free market system. Put those words in there if they think they can back those words up, which, as Paul has indicated, they can't. It is an idea, and that's all it is. It's not a reality like the free market system. Put those words in. Prove your point.
And just to piggyback on that, Councilmember, when this was first discussed, people were throwing the word around equity very loosely.
Oh, yeah.
And finally, somebody said, you know, racial equity isn't the same as regional equity. I mean, we're, we were that bad with the discussion. And so it was recognizing that it actually, it took time for them to put in the words racial and social because they were just throwing equity around and assuming people all were thinking the same thing, which, of course, they weren't. So, yeah.
I'll see if I can find a Wall Street Journal article that speaks specifically to this. It was in the last week or so that talks about this kind of planning. You know, when I find it, I'll send it to you.
You're part of the city, must read the Wall Street Journal.
Can you read? No.
So there's regional housing, and again, I mentioned that, time will tell how disruptive this is going to be to local planning. Because if this turns into regional mandates of some kind, that, of course, affects the city's ability to do the local autonomous planning that it's been set up to do since incorporation. Greenhouse gas and a regional open space conservation plan. Again, so regional open space planning based on a document that was adopted, I think, in 2017 by the PSRC. So this goes back to the question from Councilmember Wayland, talking about what PSRC do, can do related to certification. So countywide planning policies for consistency as well as the transportation elements in a local comprehensive plan. And they use the regional transportation plan as, as the basis, as well as the transportation planning requirements within the GMA. For those areas that have regional centers or subarea plans, Lakewood's already done this, but for, if there hadn't been a downtown plan adopted yet, what Vision 2050 is saying is that jurisdictions need to have that in order to have something recognized as a regional center. So subarea plans are going to be required going forward. So this is a question now for council consideration, going back to that range of growth within Pierce County for the various different types of jurisdictions, different sizes. If you add up across the way for the Kitsap and the King, the purple and the teal, they'll add up to 100%. But because Pierce County has these ranges suggested, it doesn't. I have been approached by Pierce County staff asking, what would Lakewood feel comfortable with in terms of where on the range for each type of jurisdiction and in particular core cities, since that's what Lakewood is, would Lakewood be in this discussion? And so at the bottom, you'll see something that adds up to 100%. But the idea there is it's suggesting metro cities or city of Tacoma would take its 38%. The core cities would be at the bottom of the range, meaning 85,000 would be divided up among Tacoma, I'm sorry, Lakewood, University Place, and Puyallup. The high-capacity transit would be at the 14% because that would be reflective of the amount of growth that we know will happen due to vested projects in the unincorporated area. Urban unincorporated would also be not at the top, but close to the top of that assumed population, so 15%. And then the rural would be down at the bottom, so 3%. So that's just one mix of the percentages that could happen. And the, the thought process behind this is Tacoma is saying it's going to grow and it needs to grow, and they're ready to do it. So, okay, let's hold them to it. The core cities, Lakewood, Puyallup, and University Place, I don't think any of those jurisdictions think that they can or want to plan for an additional 30,000 people between now and 2050. That's like doubling Puyallup and doubling almost University Place. It's a significant amount for Lakewood as well. Looking at the high-capacity transit, again, that's looking out in areas that are unincorporated as well as the cities of Fife, Furcrest, and maybe one more. Urban unincorporated, there are a number of vested lots in Pierce County as well as Snohomish County that Pierce County wants to make sure are recognized in Vision 2050. Because there's been discussion from other jurisdiction advocates saying, you guys are too big of a UGA already, you have too much growth going into those areas, knock it off. And Pierce and Snohomish County's response has been, look, these are vested lots, they're going to happen, so Vision 2050 needs to recognize that they're there. And then the rural one, just making sure that that's minimized since that's where growth is not supposed to be going under the GMA. So my question to you as a council is, does, does that mix of growth make sense to you? Is that something the city could support?
Well, just a, a point on the Pierce County aspect of it. If, if you look at where the buildable lands are and where people have been building, that's the urban area of unincorporated Pierce County. We don't have a place to do that. So to get back to Mr. Simpson's comment, that to the extent free market exists within the artificial lines created by the GMA, the free market says people are going to go into the urban growth area of unincorporated Pierce County, and that's where the capacity is. And that's where people can afford to buy, and that's where they choose to live over a condominium in downtown Tacoma, even though they have to drive or get on bus. So I guess that being said, I'm comfortable with driving ours down and recognizing reality. Mr., Mr. Bokey? We'll just work around here. Mr. Bokey?
So I got confused on this. The 85 to 101 for, for the core cities, but all, all the numbers in general, are those on top of what we've already accepted for Vision 2040? Or are they based upon what our census is at 2020?
This goes back to that 1.2 million and 1.8 million of jobs and people over the next 20, 30 years, excuse me. And so it's, it's replacing the Vision 2040 number. When Vision 2050 goes into effect, this will be the new allocation coming to Pierce County. And then the Pierce County jurisdictions will do the process that's been done in the past when OFM assigns numbers and the county council ultimately adopts it, but all of the jurisdictions work out how who's going to get how much, colored by, so much of it should go here, so much of it should go here. So there's little mini brackets within that negotiation process.
So currently, we're, our goal for 2040 is 75?
Something like that, yeah.
So we would be adding another 15,000 on top of that if we were to accept it?
Giving yourself another 10 years to get there.
Yeah. And we can currently house 75 somewhere?
You're downtown.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. But we don't have the buildable lands report yet.
Correct. That is not due until '21.
Okay.
Mr. Wayland?
Short answer to your question is, I think I can support that. You know, it's a little bit of a function of our buildable lands and what Mr. Bueller has to say about where we can stuff people. And it's always a push-pull, right? We've gone through this before with the neighborhoods where we try to increase density by changing zoning, we get the pushback, and so then it causes a squeeze in the urban core, which we've, I think, accommodated through our subarea plan. My, my point, though, with regard to the comment about demand and the market will dictate where folks are going to go, true. I don't necessarily think we can say for sure that most of the growth in the future will go necessarily to the unincorporated urban area of Pierce County. I think the lawyer answer is, it depends. And here's why I say that. So this last week, it was announced, the EDB announced and the downtown announced that Tote Marine is moving its headquarters from Federal Way to downtown Tacoma. That's 150 new jobs coming into downtown Tacoma. The average wage for those jobs is $100,000. I don't think if we get more good jobs, high-paying or better-paying jobs, that they are necessarily going to be desirous of moving to Holly necessarily, or Bonnie Lake, or whatever, just because they can afford a single-family residential home in the 375 to 425 range. They might be more likely to be dual-income earners, and they're going to look for the urban core. So it behooves us to make our urban core as attractive as we can, and if we build it, maybe they will come. And that's, you know, we're going to have to think about that on a different slide, about how we attract good development to accommodate the numbers we've said we can accommodate here in downtown Lakewood.
Well, and hopefully with, you know, this is going on concurrently with the change in the condo laws that happened this last legislative session, and so
Hallelujah.
Hopefully, that will encourage various housing types. So yes, there's single-family detached, but then there's also attached, whether it be apartment or condo or townhome, whatever.
Yeah.
So that may change over time where things go. Yeah.
Depends on how successful our job creation.
The irony is that same building went from even higher-paying jobs with the Russell Company that had waterfront in Cantorwood that destroyed that market when they left, to State Farm, which who paid people who had to live in apartments.
Send people out to Bonnie Lake.
They weren't making enough.
So people will actually gentrify the areas.
And the, and the Tote people will, will be somewhere in between, actually. So all the same. And what's next in that building, who knows?
Who knows?
Mr. Bradstetter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while I appreciate the discussion about saying, where would we put people and where would we build things and do that? I really think that what we should do with proposing these numbers, which are going to end up being goals that just like the goals for 2020 and 2030 and 2040, are, are going to be, not, I mean, I mean, we live in a city that has fewer people than when it incorporated. Okay, you know, but I think that we should try to massage these numbers in the way that the PCRC letter talks about. Don't look at this and say, how do we want to allocate population? Let's take the number of where does Pierce County want
Jobs.
the jobs to grow and figure that for every job, you end up with 1.8 people. And allocate, look at the jobs we're allocating to these different areas to include Lakewood and say, okay, if we're, if we're supposed to get 12,000 jobs, then we should get 20,000 people. That, that, that's about the 1.8 ratio. And that'd be consistent with what we're saying, link those two, and that that would make the, the, the best sense, and that's what we should advocate for in our letter to PRC. But it's also what we should advocate with Pierce, with Pierce, because that's what they said, it's the job, housing-jobs balance. And that in, in, in reality, because we think it's out of balance, where we already have more housing than jobs, it's maybe even not just use the, the 1.8, but look at another number that moves us, you know, use 1.7, okay? So that, that moves, that, that job helps address that. So I'd, I'd rather that we looked at both charts and then decided on percentages that's there and not necessarily constrain ourselves in our recommendation to staying within the ranges that, that happen to be in that band as this question poses. I don't know what that would look like for Lakewood because I'm, you know, I, I think that, but I'd rather be consistent that way of, with saying that the two are linked and not are two separate numbers that we hope then kind of make sense.
Any other comments?
So this comes to the end of the presentation and to looking any further that you might want to, to both of the letters. So again, the PCRC letter is what it is right now, but it may get changed. Jobs-housing balance is the main focus of it. But when you start to jump over to page, what is this, page five, there's a conversation about ports and recognizing ports. there's a conversation about ports and recognizing ports, and how growth around them and on them and manufacturing industrial centers will be different than in other types of growth centers. There's a discussion about annexation and population targets. There's a discussion about unfunded mandates on local government. And then there's conversation about the military installation, where there's both policy and suggested actual policies to be added to Vision 2050. Because right now, as I mentioned before, military installations are simply talked about at this high level. We should be paying attention, but there's no teeth to that at all. This is the beginning of that process by adding some actions listed on page nine. Just the fact that there's a glossary, but it's not attached to the document, is something people wanted to mention. It's like, hey, let's have the glossary as part of the document, how about? Then jumping over to the City of Lakewood's letter, and I will clarify, based on the discussion with you this evening, add a little bit more to the fact that Lakewood is supporting the PCRC letter. There's conversation, again, starting on page one, about what PCRC is, PSRC, excuse me, is supposed to be, which is bottom-up and not top-down. There's discussion about what are these actions that are being proposed? And how come this is being suggested in 2050? This is going even further beyond what PSRC was ever intended to do? Then there's this discussion about the regional growth strategy and those percentages that we just talked about. There's the reference, again, to military installations, just reinforcing that that's something Lakewood is supportive of. And then there's the point that was made earlier by Lakewood, back when the supplemental environmental impact statement was out for comment, about infrastructure planning. And regardless of the growth strategy, regardless of anything else, jurisdictions that incorporate after the growth has happened, such as Lakewood, are in different situations than a city that started out in the middle of nowhere and grew as a city from beginning with infrastructure being owned by that jurisdiction. So those things are something that needs to be taken into account by PSRC over time. So that's the draft as it sits. Obviously, it's gonna get edited, and we'll get another version out to the council for review. The public comment period ends September sixteenth, so it just needs to be completed, should the city wanna submit it before that time.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany, do we have any idea where Kitsap County and Snohomish County are? I mean, where, are they concerned about this jobs-housing balance? Or is Kitsap saying, "Great, we'll take all the houses," or?
From what I understand, Kitsap and Snohomish Counties both are agreeing with the Pierce County idea of jobs-housing balance. Whether they're gonna do verbatim requests or comments, I don't know. But they are in agreement that this concept is ripe right now. It's something that should be talked about. And there's actually, may be jurisdictions to the southern part of King County that agree with Pierce County's perspective as well. So we may see a little bit of a break between the Sound Cities Association and City of Seattle and City of Bellevue, that kinda...
So, there seems to be a lot of different kind of, and I'm missing the big words, professor, but these kind of incompatible ideals here. And so I'm guessing, like, they talk about, "Well, we want everybody to live out in these other areas, and we'll build some here in King County, but we'll get the majority of the jobs." Thereby, basically keeping the same commuting patterns in place that we're currently in. So when people sit in traffic... And in some, that, in my mind, doesn't seem to match up with the idea of greenhouse gas emissions and trying to reduce those. So, I'm a little lost. So I'm assuming their answer is, "Well, we'll put everybody onto light rail."
Correct.
Okay. So that's the answer. So they're gonna be able to produce evidence to say that when light rail is built out in the current heavy rail structure, that everybody who's now commuting will be able to...
Yeah, mass transit is pointed to as the way to accommodate what's being planned for. Yes.
Okay. So that's how they make up for this whole, "We're gonna have people commute even further."
Yes.
And is there any realization that, in fact, the commutes have even gotten longer under the Growth Management Act? That you now have people now, I think, from the north end, commute from Mount Vernon into the PSRC catchment area? And we have a lot of people here locally, including a lot of people who work at JBLM, but I have coworkers at the county that come up from Thurston County.
You have Lewis County people.
Okay.
Yeah, commuting, yeah.
So, is there any realization on the part of the PSRC that actually they're extending commutes even beyond the...
No, the attitude that is voiced by various and sundry would be that it's time to get out of your car, it's time to end single occupancy vehicle travel, and it's time to be building all these different housing types, because not everybody wants the single-family house with a fence and a yard. But that's what people are buying, because that's all that's being built. As opposed to supply and demand and the distance people are willing to drive because they do want that housing product. So, there's probably truth somewhere in the middle of all of it, right? But that is the attitude, is, "Let's solve this by changing transportation patterns."
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
I just wanted to answer Councilmember Bulkey's question about the word he was searching for. It's called oxymoron. And then if you put it in the framework of Franz Kafka and the theater of the absurd, you have it figured out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if there's no other comments, I'm finished here. Yes, sir.
Using the word Kafkaesque and PSRC in the same sentence would not be an oxymoron.
Exactly. Just a quick pithy little wordsmithing on the front of the PSRC letter. We talk about jobs-housing balance, but the thing refers to housing jobs. Could they just change? Did you see it on item number one there? Just switch the words? From housing jobs to jobs-housing to match everything else, yeah?
Yep, okay.
And we won't even get to the sections you glossed over, which essentially say that the rural economy shall be ignored in favor of making it a recreational area for the people who live in concrete and steel. Mr. Coffield? If it would all be, everything would all be so easy if we just got on the green line and go to the, go to the Boston Garden, isn't that...
Oh, the green line's the way to go. But if you wanna live, back in the day, you rode the orange line like me. Now they got the silver line, actually, which is really, really nice. That goes into the completely gentrified part of Boston these days. Careful what you ask for with all of this stuff, by the way. I know maybe the deputy mayor will touch upon this, but if you're not aware, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency is gonna hold a public hearing tomorrow afternoon and tomorrow evening at the Rialto Theater regarding Puget Sound Energy's, what are they calling it? LNG facility, the permit, a minor permit that is needed from the Clean Air Agency. So if you have an interest in going down and testifying, you probably wanna get there around 12:30 or 1 o'clock to get in line. And I know a number of people from EDB are gonna be down there. But again, if you have any interest in doing that. On next, on September fourth, a week from Wednesday, the public hearing will be holding, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing regarding Title 18A with some ancillary updates, some other titles within the city's code. And then they'll be coming forward to the council in, you know, the October, November timeframe. Just a friendly reminder that the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund is accepting nominations for the Larry Saunders Service Award, and the nominations are open through September 27th. You might have seen that Washdott was awarded a thirty-seven and a half million dollar federal grant for the train equipment, which was an outcome of what they needed to do from the NTSB ruling. So they're moving forward with replacing, again, some of their trains there. Also, I've been in communication with Sound Transit regarding slowing of the train. And this was after Washdott told us we needed to go talk to Sound Transit. And so Sound Transit is like, they think it's a good idea, particularly with the construction going on at Berkeley and North Thorne Lane. And whoever, the Sound Transit CEO, said they need to have Washdott Rail and Amtrak at the table to have this conversation. So, Mr. Rogoff and I are talking to try and get the right parties in the room to talk about that. I'm also waiting to hear back from Washdott Rail on their, I don't say promise, but on their comment that they would pass up the chain of command, you know, the request for them to seek the $500,000 to do a station assessment study for an Amtrak station here, here in Lakewood. So still waiting to hear back on that. And certainly, once I do, I will let you know. As you know, this body meets once a year, has a dinner event with the 2-2 Stryker Brigade, the Lancers. And so we've identified two dates that work for them. They're both Friday evenings at Thornwood Castle. The first is Friday, November first, and the other is Friday, November 15th. So if you could let myself and/or the city clerk know that, and we'd like to try and, you know, poll that to see what works best for all of you and get that squared away with the 2-2. By the way, in talking with the brigade commander and their command sergeant major, they're actually really excited about wanting to do that and come over and spend some time, not just with you, but at the Thornwood Castle. I would like to recognize our city attorney, Heidi Wagner, for her great job in getting the summary judgment motion regarding the DSHS-PRA issue, where they were under the impression that that is not subject to PRA. Police reports are not subject to PRA. And I know, as the city attorney points out, there's some other folks involved, so this might not be the end of it. But the fact of the matter is, is that she was able to persevere on a statement of facts and the law. So, well done. LTAC applications, so the deadline was this past Friday, and fifteen applications were received totaling over $847,000. Five from the City of Lakewood, just like last year, actually, for $320,000. The five from Lakewood is to continue with our imaging and media promotion. Farmer's Market, a couple of gateways. The expansion of summer concert series down at Forests Dillon Park. And the request there is more money to attract, quite frankly, better bands, to get a better, nothing against the bands that were down there, but just based on the feedback that we heard from folks who were coming down there. And then lastly, Summerfest. And we do have a pretty substantial increase for Summerfest. And the purpose of the increase is really, the event has just grown so substantially that, you know, additional resource, financial resources are needed, particularly in the area of traffic management and traffic control. So those requests will go to the LTAC Committee in September. They have an all-day meeting, I think it's September 13th. And then it will come to this body for your review and consideration during the month of November, just like in previous years. Last week, we were, myself, Chief Zarro, and Fire Chief Jim Sharp were contacted by the county regarding their Mobile Community Intervention Response Team, which looks to be a four-member group that focuses on dealing with kind of the underserved and hard-to-serve population in our community. Understand it's been a very, very successful program at the county. So when they were describing it to us, the chief and I were like, "Wait, that sounds really familiar. Actually, it sounds like our behavioral health contact team." But I think probably on a larger level, given it's the county. So they're looking to expand into the cities, and not quite sure how there'll be an opportunity to partner with the county there. But at the very least, we wanna sit down and listen to what they have to say and see if there's something that we can do there. So I would just say more to follow on that. Over at Springbrook Park, that one particular parcel, Mr. Lewine has decided not to sell his property. This is after marathon sessions by our park and recreation director. Matter of fact, it got so bad, she had to take two weeks vacation, so he won't see her for a couple of weeks. But basically, he kept saying, "Yep, I will sign the purchase and sale." Handed it to him, met with him, back and forth, back and forth. Finally, we were like, "Enough, enough." And so, we moved on from that. Likewise, Pierce County Conservation Futures has moved on as well, so the funding is no longer available for us to acquire that property. On a parallel, but different and distinct tract, CSRT, given the condition of that property, is moving that property, actually, to a nuisance abatement. So more to follow on that as well. Want to compliment Mr. Ott this evening, as well as his whole team, regarding, you know, all the transportation improvements that are out there. You know, and they're not complacent as they look out into the near and medium future. And they spent the good portion of August actually preparing three outstanding grant applications for TIB. And I know I had mentioned those to you in the past. They're also working very cooperatively with Sound Transit for some funding over by the Sound Transit Station and along 111th and 112th. In addition, the state just opened up the application period for what they call their Defense Community Compatibility Account, which is the state's version of the federal government's Defense Community Infrastructure Program. And so they're accepting applications beginning in the early part of September through November 1st. So the City of Lakewood will be submitting a funding request in support of Washington Boulevard. And then SSMCP will be submitting a request in support of the North Clear Zone, as well as a couple of other projects as well, which at this moment escaped me, even though we had a meeting on Friday on it. So I will get that to you. The Port of Tacoma has a new executive director, Eric Johnson. I had a chance to meet him on Friday and just kind of talked to him briefly after the Economic Development Board meeting. Him and I are getting together in mid-September to talk about all that is Lakewood, including the fact that they're kicking off an update to their strategic plan, and they very much would like Lakewood to be a part of that. Also, they're looking to perhaps move their headquarters. Don't know if they wanna stay in the port area or someplace else, but quite frankly, I'm just gonna offer, "Hey, would you consider moving your headquarters to Lakewood someplace and see what we can do to try and accommodate them? And see what will happen there." I'm sure you're all familiar with the camping lawsuit out of the City of Boise, Idaho. And it's the Martin versus Boise case. And I know the mayor and I were talking about this, I think it was on Friday. And so Boise is looking to ask the Supreme Court to overturn Ninth District, Ninth...
Circuit.
Circuit Court. Given that their ruling is the opposite of a number of other circuit courts around the United States, including, I think, the Second, the Third, the Seventh, and the Tenth. I might, it's like talking about special forces, special units, as a matter of fact, right? But any event, so they're petitioning the Supreme Court. I've asked our legal department to see what it would take, if council's okay with this, of filing an amicus brief when and if it comes along. But I'll leave that to the council. We won't hit the send button until we actually have something prepared.
Well, there's going to be an amicus brief. The question is whether we wanna sign on and whether we can do so without contributing.
Yes. And so AWC is, they're chit-chatting about it, let's just, yep.
That is the right organization.
Yeah, so. I wanted to talk real briefly about the Lakewood Landing Project. You know, we've done an incredible amount of work there. You know, last week, the team, we got together again. And, you know, going back a couple of years, you know, we've completed a financial and marketing analysis. You know, we have some conceptual design of what it's gonna look like out there as, you know, we look out into the future, 25, 30 acres. We're actually also looking at updating the conceptual plan of that area, because really, having all retail there today is not where the market is. So looking at housing, looking at office, looking at other uses, whether it be vertical, more likely horizontal, mixed uses. You know, we got the MOU in place with Washdott. We have completed a Phase One environmental assessment, which came back pretty clean. The Phase Two is expected to be completed either at the end of this month or no later than the middle part of September. And quite frankly, we're not expecting any major surprises there. We have completed an appraisal of the Washdott property at seven and a half million dollars. We have also worked very collaboratively with Washdott, but more importantly, their arm of their facilities in calculating a really good cost of what it will take to provide a turnkey facility for them, and it's about $30 million. As we have had conversations with Washdott about the redevelopment of that area, something that they have communicated to us when they heard that we're interested in other types of uses is a 50,000-square-foot office building. And when we said, "Well, would this be for Washdott?", they said, "You know, to be determined." I know in the past, we've had discussions with them about having them co-locate a number of state agencies in this particular area, particularly some commerce folks, some Washdott folks, some Department of Ecology folks, Natural Resources. So maybe having them in one... one, in, in one building, but certainly, I mean, a 50,000-square-foot office building right on I-5, that would be, that's like 300, 400 individuals or so. So just wanted to let you know that that came from them, based on kind of our pinging of what we'd like to see there. We also received three, three brokers, three broker teams submitted to our RFP for broker services, and so we're in the process of finalizing who we think is kind of the preferred team to, to, to step up and work, not just with the city, but more importantly, the private property owners to redevelop that area, and so more to come here in the near, in the near future on, 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 on that.
Just a point on that, if I may. Long as you're talking about meeting with Eric Johnson, what a potential it could be to have the headquarters for the Port of Tacoma, right at the 512 exit, near Frederickson, right near downtown, invisible.
So, so the time, so kind of the timing of my presentation here is...
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's...
It's a good seed to plant.
You know, really, our critical path item is the $30 million to move, move WashDOT. And, you know, so if you back out maybe $7.5 million for, you know, if we can get the sale proceeds, you know, we're looking at $23 million. We have identified a couple of locations to move them to in the Woodbrook area, including property that they already own, so the added cost to assemble some land is not that significant. Something else that we have done, just as part of our due diligence, is we have reached out to WashDOT, have not heard back from them on this. They are in the process of about to turn dirt to build a similar-type facility in Lacey by Hawks Prairie, which is to replace their existing facility in downtown Tumwater, and that took Tumwater about 10 years to get to that point. And our question for WashDOT is this, because we looked at the map of where they are, and it's a big site, and it's a site that can be expanded, it's on the east side of I-5, it's right off the interchange, so our thought is, you know, could we consolidate both of those maintenance facilities, at the same time recognizing they would need some kind of a satellite office up here, and maybe we could work with them on our front street area and give them a piece there or something along those lines. So we have, we have put that out there for them, we have, I haven't heard back yet, but again, it's something that maybe they're willing to explore. I think the biggest challenge that, and rightfully so, I think, on, in, you know, on their part, is the traffic going north and south, because you get that, you know, you get that clog going over, you know, going across the Nisqually there. But again, we think it's something worthwhile pursuing, it could potentially save us $30 million, or maybe the delta is smaller because it's just an amount of money to expand on an existing regional facility. So again, we're trying to think outside the box there, but at the end of the day, we are going to need some kind of legislative solution to come up with upwards of $30 million, and certainly, one of the key items is tax increment financing, including, you know, lift and lurf, which we've had in the past, and if we can get $2 million a year out of that, that helps buy down that $30 million, and then with some other tools that the state has, I think we could, I think we could get there, I think we could get there. The other is, you know, in terms of their $30 million cost estimate, so that's turnkey, but we're taking a closer look at what they get, because if they're getting something above and beyond that they currently have, I guess our question is, why should we pay for that? And so we want to sit down and have some further dialogue on that. But we are moving forward, also, when we get the brokers on board, given it's a 25-acre site, there's no need to say that we can't start working on the privates, on the, you know, the existing properties right now and getting somebody in and start developing that, and then over time, redevelop the WashDOT site. So again, I think it's a great opportunity for Lakewood here, and very quietly, it's kind of been coming about, but again, that critical path item is tax increment financing, as, you know, and the reason I bring this up, again, the timing, as we think about our state legislative agenda for this year, and then for the following year, we've also had some detailed conversations with Association of Washington Cities, so that when they advance their tax increment financing bill, that it includes language that allows these types of projects to be financed, because right now, it's, it's, it's kind of a gray area. And then, lastly, you're going to be having a joint meeting with your Elhop, Elhop Group on September 9th, they're actually doing some really, really cool stuff. One of them is that they applied for a grant through Pierce County to essentially create the, you know, recognize our streets as historical areas and put up some, you know, signs, some street signs that have a different color and kind of a, a nice historic look to them, so I just wanted to give you, give you a heads up on that, but they're, they're doing some pretty neat stuff, actually. And then, as far as your calendar goes, September 6th, Friday evening, Partner for Parks is having their Barn Bingo Event. September 11th, right here at City Hall, is a Wednesday, we have the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony. The 13th, 14th, and 15th, that weekend is the Lakewood Film and Art and Book Fest, or Farb, Fab, Fab? And then, of course, on Saturday, the 14th, the Colonial Plaza Grand Opening and Ribbon Cutting Event. And then on September 20th, at 3:30 in the afternoon, I believe that's a, I believe that's a Friday, is the grand opening ceremony of the John Wallstrom Center for Advanced Manufacturing Technology, which is a new building right next to the McGavick Center, it's coming along quite, quite nicely, if you haven't been by there, so, with that, Mayor.
Questions for the city manager, Mr. Whalen. Can you give us a sense of what the public's going to be invited to for the Colonial Center Open House? What are we going to have there?
Well, we're going to have food trucks, we're going to have some entertainment, actually, we expect to have some kind of an itinerary here for you in the near future, but, yeah, of course, it'll be an opportunity for you all to say something, and...
Well, I don't know if that's going to attract a crowd, but the food trucks would probably be better at that, but I think we need to get the communication out as voluminously as we can, because we're already seeing the social media saying, what did we spend $2 million bucks on, nothing's happening. So, I know patience is an order on all fronts, but I won't be on town.
All right, any others, Mr. Brezzer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You didn't mention anything about the Health Department, and I thought we were dealing with them around Carwan Village and some other, and, and the issue about testing lakes and things like that, where are we at with discussions with the Health Department, or are they pending?
Pending, pending, council member, and I can give you a quick synopsis, if I may?
Yep.
So the mayor and I, and Dave, Mr. Buhr...
You're going to steal my thunder.
Do you...
You're going to be more accurate.
But you'd be, you'd be less emotional. The, so myself, the mayor, and Mr. Buhr will be meeting with Dr. Chen here, actually, on Wednesday, and there's five items we're going to speak with him about, and they all really relate to, or most of them relate to what we believe is their core business that they should be doing. One is septic systems, we have issues at Carwan Village, as well as another apartment complex that we would like to have a discussion with him on. Another is restaurant inspections, and what happens with restaurants is the Health Department staff say, hey, you need to go talk to Lakewood Code Enforcement, so we end up doing their job for them. The good news is that the issue gets rectified, but it's not a City of Lakewood function, it's, it's, it's their activity. A third is this issue of toxic algae testing, and last year, they reached out to our Park and Rec Department, and they had a great idea, they said that the city should spend $50,000 of their, of our stormwater monies to contract with them for a position to do their job, which they had been doing for decades. So I told Mary Dodsworth to respond negatively on that. They subsequently reached out to me earlier this year, and I replied the same, that our position is that that's a core responsibility of the Health Department, and you need to be doing it, and if you have financial issues, it's a matter of prioritization. The third, the fourth area, so those are kind of the three core areas that we believe are, are, is, you know, their, their job, and then there's kind of two other areas that we would just like to have a conversation with them about. One is, they do community engagement in our community, particularly over in Springbrook, but they don't tell us, and then, quite frankly, they end up stirring the pot in our community, and we hear about it after the fact, and what gets put out there is, quite frankly, misinformation and stuff that's not factual. And then the last area actually has to do with, you just saw Ms. Spear up here this evening, has to do with GMCC. So GMCC is the Growth Management Coordinating Committee that makes recommendations to the PCRC, of which the deputy mayor and council member Boki sit on, and under the rules of how that's formed, is that cities and counties, and so the Health Department, they try and literally sit at the table and try and drive the conversation. No, no. It's city planning directors, county planning directors, and that's the way it's set up, and then on top, and then to the electeds. And then on top of that, their staff recently have been trying to create this ad hoc committee on something, and we're like, no. And so Ms. Spear has actually, quite frankly, drawn a line in the sand and said, no. And so our message to Dr. Chen is, if that's something you want to pursue, and you think it's valid, that's great, then go to the elected officials, go to PCRC, and have the rules changed, and have all of the elected bodies in Pierce County change that, so the Health Department, so you can do what you want to do, but until all the elected bodies in Pierce County agree to that, no. Sorry, that was a little bit more detailed than I was anticipating.
Okay, well, the other question that I had is, what is planned, what really is this, sort of the agenda for this reception with the youth council? Is Mr. Boki going to speak, or, 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 is he buying the pizzas, or what, what is that?
It's, it's in October, because they're, it's, it's their first meeting, it's the first regular meeting in October, and the reason we chose October was because their first meeting is in September, and they really need to get together and kind of know themselves a little bit, and then we've got, really, it's just a kind of a 30-minute meet and greet, we'll have some food for you, just to get to know the youth council, and if there's...
Like the seventh?
I believe, I believe, it's, I think it's the sixth.
But, but is it, is, is the format that we, as a council, are hosting them?
That's correct, council member.
Okay, so, so, so we're the hosts for that, and should be...
That's correct.
Planning to do things appropriately, okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Council comments, Ms. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been looking so forward to this grand opening for the Subarea Plan, I will be out of town. I'll leave the 13th for DC. Yeah, well, that's... But, yeah, so...
Well, we just mentioned to everybody that you really weren't interested.
And, yeah. The only other thing I had to report was that I had the opportunity to represent the city Thursday night at this NAACP Awards Dinner, that was very well-attended, I really enjoyed it, and I met this, the guest speaker was a former risk, a former at-risk foster kid that turned youth advocate. It was, it was fantastic.
John Gaines?
Yes, yes, and I was going to recommend him for CISL or the Youth Council at some point, if we could get that, I don't know.
That'd be good, he was, he was a high school friend of one of my daughters.
Really?
And he was doing a shadowing back in DC when we ran into him in Denny Heck's office.
Wow.
So, I, I used to...
That's a young man we met?
Yeah, we used to, you know, I was, I was track dad for Bellerbin when he was competing too, so.
Yeah, to think he was an at-risk child, now he has a PhD, and he's an advocate for our youth, and I didn't get any, I don't know his financial situation, if he charged, if he does it, I don't know that, please, but to get in touch with him, he's the customer service manager for Tacoma Public Utility. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Boki. He's waiting.
I enjoyed it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the recognition. I shall be...
Brief?
Loquacious, no, loquacious now, now I'm really, I've got several items. I've been writing notes for most of the weekend. The concert in the park, enjoyed it very much, enjoyed all of them that I, that I made it to, I would say, and I think the deputy mayor mentioned it before, these last couple at 8:30 at night, it gets a little, a little bit dark for the performers, so we might want to consider some, some, some lighting improvements, but beyond that, the weather really did cooperate. This year, we didn't have any smoky days, so, because I think last year, we had to cancel, but the, the evenings were very, very delightful. This, this Saturday, I helped with the cleanup of the entrance to the game farm on Phillips Road across from Hutloch there, the Clover Park Rotary has taken this on, as they, they are now basically adopting the game farm, wow, they brought out a lot of people, and thank goodness, they also have a lot of tools, power tools, big tools, chainsaws, bushhogs, all sorts of very efficient things, because, and, and a guy from the Department of Fish and Wildlife was there, and he explained what they're trying to do, which is to open up that front entrance a little bit, so if you drive by there today, they, there was, there's all these blackberries up that were basically covering a whole fence that ran parallel to Phillips Road. These guys took it all down, you know, knocked it down, a guy had his own dump truck, they filled that up twice, there was tons of vegetation that was cut, branches and cut, so if you drive by there now, you can see right into the entrance and the parking lot, which was their goal. But this is the start of, I, I guess, you know, a long-term effort with the full support of Fish and Wildlife, so it's really neat that they did it, and they got a good turnout of people and a good group of people, and like I say, a lot of fun power tools. Couple of things I do want to mention, I, I, I'm disappointed to hear that the gentleman didn't want to sell his property in Springbrook Park. We now have a house sitting right in the middle of our park, or not right in exactly geographically in the middle, but certainly in a spot that is probably less than ideal for the people who are going to use it, and probably not in the long-term best interest of the entire use of the park, so I think we should, we should consider purchasing the property, but that's for, I guess, another, I, I'd like us to consider to do that, we're not going to be able to do it with Conservation Futures, clearly, but I think that we need to consider condemnation of the, of the property. And I will, the EMTSERT, I think the EMTSERT's a good program, I thought they were already coming into Lakewood, because I've heard their presentations at the county. I know the MOKT has come in, that's multi-care's thing, that's a little bit higher level of care for the mentally ill, but the EMTSERT is, and I know that there's, it sounds very familiar, in, in some ways, it is familiar with our Behavioral Health Contact Team, but the Behavioral Health Contact Team is one person, the EMTSERT is actually a group of people, I believe how it operates, and so I think it's a much more robust thing and does, does quite a bit of stuff, it's really been located in the central, central Pierce area, but there is county general fund money, so they are eligible to come in, and I'll have to look, but I, I think they've already made some trips in here. Anyway, that's all I got, thanks.
Mr. Brezzer?
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned last time, the South Sound 911, the board of directors was, was meeting and did approve a construction contract for the new communications facility to go off, that the, it was done without any amendments related to required labor issues to do that, although that was brought up by the City of Tacoma members, and I suspect they're going to re-bring that issue up to try to do something after the, after the fact at the meeting this week. after the fact at the meeting this week. They, they actually weren't, weren't quite, weren't quite able to do that, and the fact that the last meeting was a special meeting, didn't allow for them to actually bring that into the meeting as an action item, because it hadn't been on, it wasn't on the agenda. So, we'll, we'll see where that goes this, this Wednesday. I did attend the last conference, that last concert, that, and again, I think that our concert series is, like a lot of things, that are just our first full year, with a full schedule of concerts, and so, with, I, I think that, you know, next year, we can expect bigger attendances, and maybe if we do something that brings maybe a little bit better-known bands to, to be able to go and do that. There's certainly plenty of room of capacity there, around the pavilion, to handle much larger groups of people than, than have been there. And the, the locale is, is, is really good for this sort of concerts that, that we want to have, to be able to go and do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I just, it's just an observation tonight, that I thought we did a very good job. I think this council continues to do its due diligence in all the issues that we confront, and I thought it was very well done. And that, council member Bokey, is an example of how to be laconic. Thank you.
Laconic?
Laconic. It's a word that comes from ancient Sparta, about 500 B.C. Thank you, Mayor.
Word origin, word origins for 50, Alex. Mr. Whalen.
Yeah. I'd like to see him speechless, but you don't have that pleasure. I chaired the EDB meeting last Friday of the, the board, and as the city manager indicated, we had a great presentation from Eric Johnson, the new executive director of the Port of Tacoma, and he described three main points of his early tenure. He wants to strengthen the relationship between the port and the tribe, he thinks it's had some challenge over the last few years, he wants to certainly strengthen that relationship. He wants to engage and embark on a strategic plan, as the manager indicated, which hopefully will include some good input from Lakewood. And he also wants to restart the SubArea planning process, which needs a restart, because, in his words, any process that takes more than three years really isn't much of a process, it's, it's an endeavor. So, he's working hard to make that process, you know, of value and kickstart it sooner than later. So, he seems like he is going to be a good fit, and look forward to having more opportunities to engage with him. One of the other presentations he made, as I mentioned earlier, was, not he, but the EDB Director Bruce Kendall talked about the success in bringing Tote to downtown Tacoma. One of the good things about bringing new businesses into Tacoma to fill existing Class A vacancy is it creates new opportunity and demand for more Class A office space, and it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg thing, as we think regionally, how do we attract more and better employment and jobs to the region? We kind of have to have some more office space, because we're running out of Class A office in the downtown core. We haven't had a new building built down there, done from, God, I don't know, the mid-eighties, probably, since the Columbia Bank building.
Early Columbia, early eighties, 30 years Columbia Bank building.
So, you know, again, thinking about the Lakewood Landing Project that the manager mentioned, hmm, might be a fantastic opportunity to get a push for Class A office right at an I-5 entrance, it's very visible and attractive for some good-paying employers to come down. So, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that that might be an opportunity. In terms of transportation projects, one of the things that we might want to think about adding to the mix is, with regard to Fort Silken Park events, I was out there this weekend, looked at Angle Lane, the improvements we're making in Angle Lane, and how it kind of could draw and go right to the intersection there, where you got Angle Lane exiting at Fort, at Stilicon Boulevard, out of the park there. If we wanted to create opportunities for better traffic circulation, it might be worth having our traffic folks consider how you would have event traffic come in, because there's a lighted intersection right there. It's just a matter of swinging the roadway just a little bit, taking out about three or four bushes, and you're there. I know that that's simplistic, but it's something that may be worth taking a look at, it would, I think, enhance the trafficability for major events greatly. Communication, again, we talked a little bit about the September 14 opening of the Colonial Center, you know, it's more and better, or mo-better, if you want to combine the words, may not be a Spartan word necessarily, but I think we need-
That's pigeon, actually.
Yeah, we need to, we need to do a, a good job of sound-
Thank you.
Yeah, sounding the gun.
Shut up.
Yeah. All y'all, you come to this event, would you? But I, I think that we need to make sure that that provides an opportunity for people not only to enjoy it, but hopefully to visualize what we hope it to become. So, if we had any information pieces about the opportunities, or maybe some visual stuff, that would be great, because I, the thing I continue to hear, which drives me crazy, is, what are they going to do? When are they going to renovate the theater? When are they going to fill these vacant positions? And I want to say, who the heck are they? Where are you? If you own a business, or you have some investment, why don't you step up, okay? But we're going to get that a lot. What are they going to do? When are they going to fill this? When are they going to develop that? And we just need to be professionally prepared to say, we have set the table, it's now ready for the market to dine, and we will do whatever we can to facilitate investment, but they need to come to the table, including the landlords of those vacant buildings, from my humble opinion, but it's a discussion for another day. That's it.
All right. Because a lot of things have been covered. I was on a conference call today with Association Defense Communities Federal Advocacy and Outreach Committee. 125 letters from mayors were submitted in support of funding DCP. There was a big surge from Texas. And today, as we spoke, the Senate passed a budget bill, without amendment and presumably going to the president for signature, containing, well, eliminating the need for continuing resolutions and eliminating sequestration because of the cap. That's good news, they, they, basically, they spent enough money to make enough people happy. There's no limitation on the spending, that's bad news. DCP, if there was no amendment, DCP probably isn't funded, but they hadn't drilled, there wasn't the opportunity to drill down and see. The, there has been some additional discussion regarding the fourth estate, the various agencies that are in the Department of Defense, but not in a military department. They are, as you might have read, initiating a move toward consolidation of the exchange systems, and then adding that in with the commissary. So, it would be Department of Defense retail as one, one entity. OEA is the opinion of people more informed than I am, that OEA is the most favored of the fourth estate, at least it is in the external communities, and it's probably not in danger. But there also was some late-in-the-day chatter about who in the department, or in the Department of Defense, was the person who needed to hear from communities, and it's one of the assistant secretaries, I got that name somewhere. But, so it's, that's probably going to be a, an initiative of the Association of Defense Communities, is to advocate on behalf of OEA. So, that's it. Ms. Moss?
Just one thing I forgot to mention, the most important thing, tomorrow, LMCC will have a booth at Farmer's Market.
Oh, great.
Yes. So, I hope you get the chance to stop. Bye. Thank you.
All right. So, executive session time. Probably see where we're going to go, do a, I think do a short one first and see where we're going to go on this, and, and then we'll decide whether we extend. So, now recess into the executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss the performance of a public employer official. When we come back, we will adjourn, taking no further action but to adjourn or recess.